Right.
So it's not like the team.
The audio is going live.
If you said it's either great or boring.
Well, I'm gonna have to get my laptop out here. I just think it's easy, so I have a nice chance to learn that. So, he said all that he'll take.
Every time, you know, every night.
So you got to go see some business earlier. So I said, I don't care, man. Take care of them, I can see them.
What kind of cigarette?
You got it, my man.
Did we get a closing date yet?
I don't know if there's a closing, but I asked for it.
Too much wind, that's the thing, though, it's so windy there, it's slow.
It blows right in our house.
It's lower south.
It's been so bad, it's been sick to my stomach, it's so bad. It's been going on for at least a year.
A year. A year, fuck. I can't imagine the alarm that they'd walk. When you go, that you walk that long, you're nothing.
So slow.
It's so slow, but then, the city has a, at the valve there on Arlington. For the main valve, that's where the, that's where the alarm is. So if anything in the city busts, that'll alarm there. But anything that way.
It's lost, it's had a pressure loss.
It's had a pressure loss.
That's like, we clean up water or something.
I'm happy about it.
Wow, smell, yeah, as you call, it's just, it's kind of traded the dirt. You just have to do it.
Just want to see the business.
They got guys there today, and they got big crews. They got to bring the big pump, it's free, take two, three days.
We can all.
We gotta get a valve for that county drain on two that.
That's what I like to see, man. Works like that, it's good.
Isn't there another one of them stacks, regulators off of, off of your corner? Didn't somebody hit that once?
Yep, that's low pressure. And, uh, that's off the T-line. And there's one from the river, or from the river. That guy hit me. But that's all the low pressure, low air pressure, but, you know, that's not all the main trouble.
I got it, I got it.
That's the main truck line.
That's real, put that thing, fifty feet off the road?
It's about, it's about forty yards off of forty three, it's just a bit of that spot.
How far off, two fifteen?
About the same distance, actually, probably further.
Did you guys get my farm money?
It's right in the middle of that swamp, it's right there on that.
So we're good?
On the farm money, we're good. It would be on the south.
We cut that down.
What up, two K?
Yeah, we cut it down.
I didn't know, I'm sure I did.
Do you guys need some?
He hasn't said anything, I mean, I haven't, his wife has said, my wife has. Garage was just, you know, the barn was gonna fall down. You know, they had fixed that, and they said, the garage was probably gonna put it on the other side.
You guys need another hard hit, I mean, I'll be honest. I owe you money, too, on that. I owe my sausage sticks.
Yeah, you know what's really bad? Here's your seven, how did you have some stock? So you're just sitting, I'm like, oh, you can have yours anytime, hell, we're gonna have to. We had like twenty of them, it stopped.
Okay, I, um, I might knock on your door. Is there a good time to knock on your door?
Anytime, anytime you ever need it, because she's always, most of the time, she doesn't answer.
Just tell her I'm home. It's like six dollars, six dollars.
Well, you don't need to have shit out the pan, you know, if you own the board, you'll get it.
You know, I could see you.
I feel bad, because I should, I should have grabbed it. There's something, she got more rappi tapes.
I'd be embarrassed, taking the hard, giving it to her.
I don't know.
Yeah, double check all that, y'all, because I don't have a plan for that, I haven't figured any of your plans yet. Thank you, boy.
Not bad again. Hey, how you guys doing? Hey, that ball change gets around there.
I'm unhappy.
Down around the very bottom. I know you changed it. Maybe, again, I don't know where we wasted our time.
Hey, Fred.
Well, I don't know, we should probably move somebody to post it anyway. And we'll get our best stuff, which we'd like to have some way, it's the best goal. So maybe we can apply, we bought, James, this is.
Yeah, it's still, that's what.
That's supposed to be out the board, both of us.
Yes, razors. The board's new.
Something's going on at the library, isn't it? Yeah, that's exactly what. That's exactly, that's exactly what it is, because I had it.
No, usually I don't make it, I put on your stuff.
Because that's coming up in three weeks, at Congress.
But I got so excited.
Yeah, that's, that's.
I just know I need to try to do every day, and so that's a little.
You stay up at night, what were you good?
Well, sale card, you put it between twenty-three and the twenty-five page.
Yeah, old boy.
Usually those cars.
That's a good job.
It costs what you get.
That's fun, so. That's gear, say fast. I'm trying to learn. I wouldn't expect that. It's so bad.
Yeah, she had the motor. Yeah, she had the motor. That's been a few weeks.
That's for us, you know, we can't hide. I got that kind of house, it definitely looked like a pepper at home.
Right, call a word, I stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Vader.
Griffin.
Hicks.
Brey.
Bry.
Yes.
Alaman.
Here.
Louder.
President.
Farmer. Mr. Householder.
President. Uh, next one, can we get approval of the agenda presented?
I would like to put a C in on your unfinished business for Councilwoman Camery's discussion, and possibly a vote on that tonight.
Okay. Eleven C, you said, Mr. President?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve the agenda with the addition of eleven C.
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor to the amended agenda?
Aye.
All opposed? So it's been approved, with eleven C as the camera discussion. All right, at this point, can we, uh, have approval of the city council minutes? Regular meeting held on two, five, twenty eighteen?
I make a motion that we accept the regular meeting minutes of Monday, February fifth, two thousand eighteen, for the city of Aor.
That was cool. Any more discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. The next, next one is approval of council paper on payroll.
Okay, um, if you'll go with, um, checking two, um, with, for a total, um, under health benefits of eight thousand three twenty-eight oh four, I make a motion that we accept that amount.
Second.
Any more discussion? Roll call.
Vader.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Bry.
Yes.
Alaman.
Yes.
Louder.
Yes.
Farmer. Yes. Householder.
Yes. Motion approved.
Okay, and the next one, under checking two, uh, check to Lynn Farmer to reimburse it for the pillars, and it should say, in Mora Park, not the cemetery, so I'd like that clarified. People think I'm getting paid too much. Uh, so I make the motion that we accept, um, that amount.
Second.
Any more discussion on it?
If you don't wanna donate those.
I think I've already donated enough, thanks. When everybody else donates the same amount, I'll be happy to pitch in.
Thank you, then. And no more discussion on it, uh, roll call, please.
Vader.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Bry.
Yes.
Alaman.
Yes.
Louder.
Yes.
Farmer. I mean, I'm staying. Householder.
Yes. Motion approved.
Okay, on to page three, which is, um, roads, for a total of two thousand four twenty-six fifty-one. I make the motion that we accept that amount.
Second.
Any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Vader.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Bry.
Yes.
Alaman.
Yes.
Louder.
Yes.
Farmer. Yes. Householder.
Yes. Motion approved. Next one?
Okay, the next one, on checking two, um, grant total amount of all of the expenditures of one seventy-eight, one nineteen, sixty-three, payroll, two nine eighteen, of eighteen thousand five twenty-five fifty-seven, payroll, two twenty-three eighteen, of eighteen thousand three sixty-seven thirty-nine, bonds, one thousand one fifty, um, check number thirty-five thirty-two, for two thousand seven ninety-three thirty-nine, and the debit card, one thousand nine oh seven twenty-five, for a grant total, two hundred and twenty thousand eight hundred and sixty-three twenty-three. I make a motion that we accept that amount.
Second then?
Any discussion?
Yeah, how much, uh, how many more payments are you got on that server phone?
It's done in twenty twenty-six. It's so beautiful. A lot.
Yeah, that was, that's a big portion of that amount. I think, New York, for a hundred twenty-three thousand eight hundred and ninety-six dollars and eighty-eight cents. The United States Postal Service's utility postage, nine hundred dollars, is that for quarterly, or how often is that?
That's about three months, I would say, that.
Any other questions, comments on that?
Uh, yeah, the Carriage House demo, uh, it sounds like, uh, the DDA is still interested in purchasing that and reimbursing us for that, the cost of that demo.
Sounds like a plan we bring up in the DDA meeting. All right. All right, any more discussion on it? Roll call, please.
Vader.
Yes.
Hicks.
Yes.
Bry.
Yes.
Alaman.
Yes.
Louder.
Yes.
Farmer. Yes. Householder.
Yes. Motion, please. Next one is other regular business resolutions, proclamation reports, and presentations. The Bangor Public Schools report.
Can I just do that right after I do the fire department report? Knock them out both at one time? Unless you want me to do it.
I'll do it right now, okay, follow the words.
Don't want me all out of whack. My last two, I was always like, I just roll right into it. I just wanted to say, so every month I'm gonna be coming, this month I don't have anything wrote, because our superintendent's secretary is out for a few weeks with an injury, so she's gonna start giving me a little half pager to put in the report, starting next month. But just a few highlights, we've hired a new high school principal, that'll be starting probably the first or second week in March. He comes to us from Goebbels, he was the, uh, the principal over there, and so he's gonna be starting off here. We've hired a new curriculum coordinator, um, new maintenance person, maintenance transportation person. We've got a new first food service director that we're sharing with Fenville. Um, so a lot of, quite a few new hires that have taken place over the past year. We've lost a few, um, few people, but we've also gained some really good, uh, some really good assets with the, the new addition, especially with the food service.
Did we get the Dino students, too?
Did we hire Dino students? Yes, Dino students at the middle school, that was the other one, yes. That's, that, I think, starts next week. Um, so, or the Dino students at South Walnut, so the South Walnut, the only new position that we created was the Dino students at South Walnut. All the rest of the positions were kinda just shuffled around and refilled in some, some positions, so some really good additions. Things, things are happening, they're moving forward. Uh, we're starting to come up with our, um... I'm trying to bring, anyway, I'll bring that up next month. So, we, we've got a lot of things in the works with a different company, not, not our slogan, not our, it's not, it's a, um, uh, not our motto, but...
Like your mission statement?
Mission statement, thank you, our mission statement, that's what I'm looking for. You know, so we're redeveloping all of that, before we hire another superintendent, we wanna have our mission statement, our everything in line, so when we hire the new superintendent, this is what you go by, you know, and so, so that's what we're working on next, is to get that done. All these tips will be into place by the start of new school year next year. So we're putting all this stuff into place, we're really taking our time and doing it right. And so, a new superintendent knew everything at the start of the school year in August next year. So, a lot of, lot of extra meetings, a lot of planning, but I think we're doing things, getting things back on track. We're changing the culture, that's what it's all about, it's changing the culture that, uh, need, has needed to be changed for quite some time at the street district. So, um, one other thing, um, I'm also part of the Bangor Viking Club, which is also changing. Um, we're totally separate of the school now, where it was always underneath their umbrella, but, uh, we've got our own five oh one C three. We totally support all the school athletic functions for the school, and also doing other big projects. Back in, in the eighties, they, they paid for the school board and the gymnasium, which is a project that we're gonna be looking at, because that needs to be redone. But we also support every one of the athletic programs by helping them out with money for different things. And so, one of our biggest fundraisers is our, um, reverse raffle, that's coming up March tenth. And so, it's sixty-five dollars a plate, uh, that gets you a ticket, and, uh, we're selling a hundred and thirty tickets, with the grand prize being fifteen... Oh, absolutely, we do, absolutely, and so actually, we've had a discussion, and it's still in the infancy stages, that's actually our top priority right now, um, I sit on, one of my committees is, is the, uh, Buildings and Grounds Committee, Facilities Committee, I'm the chair of the Facilities Committee, and so one of our things, every month when we meet, I put a, uh, a list, what are the current needs, current wants, and what do we absolutely have to do right now, and so, um, it was, the locker room in the middle school, ceiling was falling down, got that fixed over Christmas break, um, and different things, right now, the absolute thing we must fix right now is tighten up the school's security, one of being the cameras and the door locks, they're still using the old key fob door locks that went out in twenty years ago, that's not, you know, and so we're looking at the, uh, the card swipe system, um, some of our doors, uh, to the locker room, to the, to the boys' varsity locker rooms that face the, uh, the, the parking lot, those doors always had a habit of the kids would go in there and go, you know, change their clothes and stuff in the locker room, and leave those doors propped open to the, to the parking lot, well, last week, we just put on a little ten dollar little buzzer door alarm, and when that door's open, that alarm's going off, and so, it's a simple fix for right now, but, um, until we can get everything else in project, so what we're looking at is to see where we're going to find the funding, um, to the tune of about two to three hundred thousand dollars is what it's going to cost for new securities, as far as door locks, keypads, cameras, upgrades, and all that side of stuff, so we're, we're kind of tossing around some ideas about how we're going to get that done, and this summer, we're going to pull the trigger either one way, you know, either, you know, we don't want to drain our reserve fund, because we've just got that built back up, but we're talking about maybe possibly looking at like a little short-term loan, just to pay for, for school security, you know, we all have a feeling that there's going to be some money funneled from somewhere eventually, but we're not going to wait for that, and a lot of places aren't going to wait for that, because you can't, you sit around and wait for that, you know, something will happen, so, um, so right now, our buildings are secure, you still have to get buzzed in, but there's still a lot of gaps, and so that's something that we're definitely concerned about and going to be looking into in the very near future.
Because someone could just follow and get buzzed in.
Exactly.
Exactly.
Exactly. Yeah, and so, it's better than what it was, but it's not where it needs to be, and so, so we're definitely, you know, that's definitely on the hot, topic radar right now.
Can you also bring up to the Viking Club, one of the, um, arts at the school, about maybe painting vitux, putting back the Viking, Viking country, I know Fred appreciates those daisies, but I think we would, uh, appreciate having Vikings back up there.
That was, that was, that was talked about at one point from somebody, and so, yeah, I'll bring that up, touch base with the art teacher and see if that's a project, and that's the way it was spoken, you know.
It's the way it should be.
Right, you know, and at that point, I don't think we even had an art teacher, I think two years ago, when those got repainted, because, you know, and so I think, you know, I know we have an art teacher now, and so maybe that's a project that they'd be willing to maybe look at like spring break time or something to be, to look into, so, yeah, good idea there.
Thanks, Todd, Derek. Um, right now, I've got Dan Hutchison, new library director of Bamburran County District Library.
Hi, everybody, um, I know you have a busy agenda tonight, so I don't want to take up too much of your time, but my name's, um, Dan Hutchins, I'm the director of the Bamburran District Library, and, um, I'm not exactly new to your area, um, I'm from the east side of the state, the town called Rochester, but my wife is from Benton Heights, I'm over near Benton Township, and so I've been visiting this, this area for almost twenty years, and so when this opportunity came along, I, I decided it was, um, time to move over to her side of things. Um, I'm very happy to, to be here, before accepting this post, I was director of the Harrison Township Hub of Library at Lake St. Clair, so I went lake to lake, um, and, um, just to, I'll just fill you in on the direction I plan on going in is, um, I like to reframe the library system as more of an educational institution for everybody, because, um, that's the way it used to be viewed probably until around World War Two, and then, um, somewhere along the line, people forgot that we were education, started thinking of us as more of a social service, and it's like, no, we're education for the young, we're education for the old, we're education for everyone in between, and that's the direction we'll be going in, and, um, toward that end, in the next couple of months, um, we'll be introducing a new service called tutor dot com, which will be online tutoring with live, um, degree, background check vetted tutors, um, almost every day of the year, um, available to help not only students, but also adult job seekers, um, who need help searching for jobs online, need resume assistance, need cover letter assistance, um, there's also, there'll also be test preparation resources available on it, so if you, someone wants to practice taking the SAT, and they want to do it double time, or they want to do it halftime, or practice taking the ACT, they'll be able to do that, so that's something coming up in the next couple, couple of months, um, on a local level, uh, a few things I'll mention, is, um, last week, we got a new circulation desk for the library, we had that installed, thank you, and, um, I'm working with Regina on getting some new carpeting in the library, um, City of Bangor's generously agreed to help us out with that, and, uh, we're also trying to put together a meeting between, um, City of Bangor, Bangor Township, and Arlington Township in the next month or two, I'm just waiting on my assistant director to finish the annual report, which should be done any day now, and then we'll schedule it up, um, I've left a small stack of my cards on the front table here, if anyone would like one, please help yourself, and I'm here for you, I'm available anytime, so feel free to call me, email me, and I'll do whatever I can to, um, help you out or answer your questions, and thank you so much.
A quick question.
Sure.
If you don't mind, you say you guys offer practice for the SAT?
That will be coming with the tutor dot com product we're purchasing, um, I'm meeting with the representative Thursday, and I'm trying to, actually what I'm trying to do is I'm trying to talk some of our local neighbors, some of our other libraries into joining group purchase to bring the cost down a little bit, um, I was just talking to a representative from your schools, I think it was at Lynn Johnson's. Yeah, yeah, you know, and he, and he expressed some interest, so I think he'll be coming as well, so it's, you know, so maybe it's something, maybe it's something we can do together, but Bamburran District Library is committed to buying it, I know we're going to buy it, we're just really essentially trying to get the best price right now.
So it's going to be like an online program?
Yeah, we have, it's, um, it's, it's kind of more of a platform, because it's, it's powered by the internet, but there's actual, um, tutors on the other end, individuals rather than bots or programs, so the students or the job seeker, as the case may be, will be communicating with a live person that goes through a really rigorous process, I think only like six percent of the people who apply are actually accepted as tutors, because they have to have a degree, they have to pass a background check, but they also have to pra, you know, pass like various tests and simulations of actual tutor, tutoring environments to make sure they're able to do it, and they have to be experts in their subject area, whether that's language or mathematics, or whatever the case may be, so, um, so that's something, we're having the meeting Thursday, and then we have to kind of get together and say, okay, who's interested, so I'm hoping we'll have that in the next couple of months.
Is, is it a proven program?
Yeah, it's proven, um, actually, the, um, we're on, from on the east side of the state, we put together a group purchase for it over there in the Suburban Library Cooperative, which is mostly Macomb County, and, um, once we put together that group purchase, we, um, partnered with the schools to allow students to use their student ID numbers to access the program rather than, you know, simply having a library card, and it just took off like a rocket, and, um, we had, we had some of the local teachers vetted first, but, um, the company that owns it is the Princeton Review, which you may be familiar with for their test preparation materials, so, so this is not a new company, you know, this is, this is a proven educational, you know, quantity that, that knows how to open together a product like this, so.
I do have a question.
Sure.
The genealogy room at Decatur, are there any plans to expand that at all, or?
Um, not to expand it at the moment, I know we probably, it's been suggested to me, we probably need to take a look at it and see if it can be reworked in some ways, because, um, I, I think, um, I, I think maybe, you know, we need to get actually a librarian in there to like look at reclassifying everything and making it easier to use, and I also know that the last director had, um, some online resources that weren't finished, that were in progress, to try and put more of the contents in there online, so those are things we need to look at, but, um, we haven't really discussed expanding it, do you think there's a need for that?
Yeah.
Okay, well, what does it not have that it could have or should have?
Well, sometimes when I've gone over there, the person who's there to help you isn't maybe as knowledgeable as they need to be, so, you know, it's not that the, you know, the room is bad, it's just that the person there sometimes is not as knowledgeable about things and questions that you're asking about, so.
Okay, you, you should, you should, um, give me a call or send me an email, so I can find out who that might be, and, um, so I can look into that, because I know there's one person who works in there that is very knowledgeable, and perhaps too knowledgeable, um, you know, and then I know there's another person who works in there, so I just, I just need a little war guidance on that, so.
Okay, you're from the county, right? I'm working for the county, or?
No, I'm working for the library, the library is a district in the, in a similar way to that many school districts or districts, so we're our own, or we're our own governmental unit, we're, we're independent from the county government.
So how much time are you going to spend in Bangor? I'm assuming that this is a small library compared to some of the others.
Yeah, we have seven locations, the largest one is in Decatur, and that's about fifteen thousand square feet, then our next largest one is in Madawan, and that's about six thousand square feet, and then they kind of go down in size from there, um, Bangor is one of our more significant locations in that there's a little more activity going on there than some of our other ones, and what I'm trying to do is I'm trying to get to every, like, we're headquartered in Decatur, so I spend much of my time there, but I'm trying to get out to a location every week, um, because I realized they're all my libraries, not just Decatur, I was out at, um, Bangor the entire day last week when the desk was installed, so, so I'll be, I'll be out of Bangor probably around once a month.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate your time.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Next one is Department of Public Works report, any questions, comments on that?
I just have a quick question, uh, Division Street lift and a park road lift called out seventeen times, what was the alarm with it? Was anything bad with it?
I don't know.
No.
Got a lot of infiltrations, you know.
Okay, cool.
Any other questions, comments on that? Um, the next one is the Bangor Police Department report. Questions or comments on that?
You guys have it?
We don't have it.
I don't have it.
There isn't one.
There is not one.
You guys want to stretch the fire department?
Minutes? Oh, we're looking for, uh, police department, no, Tom had one last meeting, and he didn't have one this time, so, yeah, so there is a one, yeah.
Um, next one is the fire department report, um, you're going to talk about that with the annual, annual report?
Sure. Let's do the, uh, just the monthly report real quick, everything else was in your package pretty, you know, pretty uneventful month last month, one of the things we're working on is our, our budget, we have our budget workshop, and talked about that, our, um, main, big meeting with all three townships is going to be March, I can't remember where you put that calendar, I think it's the twenty fifth, is it twenty eighth, the last Wednesday in March?
Right.
I believe it's the twenty. Yep, the twenty eighth at.
Seven.
Seven o'clock will be our big monthly meeting with everybody, um, after our fire board meeting in March, I'll have the printed up budget packet to give to everybody, um, so everybody will get that and plenty of time for our, for our meeting, um, but, all in all, our budgets, uh, pretty much the same as last year, I mean, we, our budget did go up two percent, just pretty much cost of living, uh, the cities didn't go up at all, actually stayed the same, if not dropped a little bit, because the taxable value on the city dropped again last year, hopefully for the last time, so, and so, uh, um, everybody's excited about what the taxable value of the city's going to look like in a couple of years, so, um, real quick, I'll just go over it, any, any questions on the monthly stuff? The, um, annual report, so this year, my report is from February one to February one, um, because of the way our, our new report writing software that we implemented last year started on February first, so I had to wait to get the data for a full year, so, so we just went February to February, on the first, first two pages, you can see our nice, uh, just a welcome letter, and then the, uh, the list of all of our members, including the board, our officers, and then our firefighters, the, uh, the next page just gives a, a snapshot of our calls for the year, so for that twelve month period, we ran four hundred and sixty six calls, so, uh, um, just going to pass a couple of these out, keep them, keep them along. And, uh, we ran four hundred and sixty six calls for the, for the year, kind of gives you a breakdown, so sixty eight percent of our calls, area-wide, were medicals, um, we had forty nine fires and so on, and then it gives you a more detailed look, uh, breakdown right below that, the next page is our incidents by day of the week, we didn't have a real hot, busy day, you know, every day was pretty much the same, Saturday was just a little bit more, but every day of the week last year was pretty, pretty equal, um, and, and then this data on the, on the bottom left kind of reemphasizes every year, and I point that out because it shows you that over a third of our calls happened during that eight to four window, that middle of the day time period, and so if you take that and, and plug it in, the days of the week shows you that over a third of our calls happened Monday through Friday during the day, uh, so that's one of the main reasons why we have a part-time person there during the day, and myself there as well, so it kind of gives you just a little breakdown right there, next page is our response time, for our entire area, we had a, a five-minute response time on average, five minutes and point five seconds, so pretty good average response time for a whole area, and in the middle, it shows the breakdown of the response time for all of our areas, so actually, the city of Bangor receives the, uh, the fastest response time of two point six seven, that, uh, takes into consideration about ninety to ninety-five percent of our members live within the city, so we get there pretty quick, um, actually goes on, shows you about our, our aid, where we went to, how many times we went to automatic aid, mutual aid, and some of the other areas, the next page breaks down how many of all of our members, how many calls they ran, and what percentage. And the next couple of pages are just. No, he's already got, he went, he got it last week. Kind of rude, I only grabbed a couple, I get in tune when I'm, when I'm started, and so, uh, so just the community events, our circus, our picnic, um, different things that we did last year, uh, fire prevention will be the next one, going to seeing the kids, then all of our delivering Christmas presents, our pancake breakfast, one of our, uh, Louis retired, our community book box project, that picture in the middle, um, I just had to put in there because two of the, uh, two of the four guys in that picture are no longer with us anymore, and then, um, the picture of Dwayne with the Rio that we refurbished last year, the next picture, the next page be, uh, our new rescue truck that we got last year, Fourth of July, Christmas parade, ever very, most of you remember when the, the helicopter landed just outside of town on forty three, there's a picture of that right there, um, just a few other things, we'll skip past Arlington Township. So Bangor City, we ran two hundred and twenty five calls in the city, eighty percent of those are medical calls, so we ran seven fires, a hundred and eighty one medicals, thirteen hazardous, four service calls, thirteen good intents, and seven false alarm false calls, most of our false alarms or our good intent calls take place at about three locations in the city, um, either eight twenty second street, or the schools alarm going off, or the school buildings, um, so that's about where most of those, those calls trans. So every time we run a call, the, the Google map comes up and it puts a pin where that call was. And so you can actually pull up on my computer a map of the city and it shows a pin every place that there's a call. And so you can expand that out and see the whole county, or you can zoom it in and tighten it in, and you can click on that pin. It'll tell you the date, the incident number, and the type of call that it was. So it gives you a good snapshot when you're looking at our area, where the calls actually take place. And so that's just good, good data. I can't print that up because the print, it's too big, you know, for this, but, but you're more welcome if you ever want to stop by, I can pull it up really quick. The nice thing about that report writing software, it's, it's cloud-driven, so I can look it up on anybody's computer. So if you ever say, hey, come over, I want to see that, I can log into the system anywhere and do it. And so it's a pretty neat software, and we really enjoy using it. So, any questions?
What'd you bring up about the new wet suits you got?
Thank you. So this last weekend, we received everything, two months ago, the board approved to, to start getting into ice rescue. We bought new suits, two suits and everything that goes along with it, a ring and everything like that. And two of our guys, David and Alex, just got back yesterday from, what's, Venice?
Wisconsin.
Wisconsin, in the middle of Wisconsin for a three-day, hands-on, like 16 hours they spent in a suit, learning ice rescue. So they are both now instructors and technician levels to, to do ice rescue training and to teach everybody. Next month, in March, the second Tuesday and the third Tuesday, we're having Ron Wise, the chief at South Haven, who's been an instructor for years, ice rescue instructor, he's gonna come teach everybody as a group. So our first Tuesday will be a total classroom, and then the, the second Tuesday or the third Tuesday of the month will be all hands-on. Even though there's no ice, we're still gonna suit up, we're gonna go play in the water so everybody can play with them. So that way, then, next year, Alex and David, these two guys are instructors now, will be able to teach everybody again. So we'll start having ice rescue training, it'll be in the fall. We're not gonna wait till after the season to do it. We'll do it in the fall, first, first part of cold weather, when we first start getting ice, we'll go out and play in it. So, so they're getting it once, and they're gonna get it again this next month, and then we're all gonna get, get trained in March again. So I know it's kind of late, but that's okay, we'll be prepared for next year. And so we're gonna be looking at the possibility of a small inflatable-type boat that, that also makes for ice rescue and to have in the summertime for open water, because we have had some drownings over the years where we could've used other than inflatable-type boat. The station many, many years ago used to have a John boat that they'd somehow throw it up on a truck or an engine or somehow and get out there and paddle around, and that's how they did business. But now the inflatable boats have come down in prices, and we can fill a boat with one of our, let's see, one of our, our bottles. So one bottle will fill a boat, so it's not like they take a ton of air to fill these things up anymore. So they really come a long ways with the technology, so. So yeah, ice rescue's coming, we're getting in, you know, and it's about time. We've been, you know, it's been a long time coming, so. Next one. Thank you. Any other questions? I'm gonna run up to my truck and grab those fires.
I guess I have, I got one question. I see in the minutes that we didn't have any representation with the fireboard meeting.
Yeah.
And I know we had a council meeting here, but we also didn't send our alternates.
End up being sick the last minute. So, did you make it?
No, I didn't make it.
Oh, you didn't make it either? You're both sick. I was sick, I don't know.
It'd be nice if the alternates could have, I didn't have an altern, I didn't know how many alternates we have.
We got one.
So it'd be nice, you know, I know, I know we had the meeting here, but it'd be nice if we.
We had the meeting here, and the meeting there was over maybe five minutes after the meeting here was over. It was a quick meeting.
I just gotta ask, I gotta ask a question, because I went down afterwards and I attended the meeting, so. Next thing, and I see in the minutes, nobody was there, so.
I didn't make it, I, I was here.
We had a last minute, a few days in advance to schedule it too. So we probably should postpone it a little longer instead of made a few days out from our last fireboard meeting.
If it's nice, if nothing else, I have the alternates sit down there.
Yeah. All right, panelists. The next one is the DDA report.
Yeah, we did. We did approve our treasurer's report with the balance forward movement of $138,091.8. We did pay to make a motion to approve our bills. We completed our Phase 1 project and got a report on it for our property, the carriage house, or the, our property at Jerry's Garage. And right now, we're, we did make a motion to apply for a grant from the Van Guren County Brownfield Recovery Authority to help pay for our Phase 2 Jerry's Garage property. We, we did make a motion to have a Phase 1 done on the carriage house property behind the Great Meat Hall with the potential of 12 parking spaces, so we're gonna get the Phase 1 done right now. We're still interested because that would give us some parking in that area. If it can all work out, we'll see how the Phase 1 comes out, if we can get that done. 135 West Monroe, we're just waiting on the closing date. As far as I know, we're still waiting on that, so, am I correct in that? Okay. Still waiting on the closing date for that, but everything else is done, so as soon as we get that, that project will be completed. And they did extend the survey for the, the DDA plan. They extended the survey to March 16th, which is gonna be a couple of days after the community meeting, so that'll give people a chance to get them in at the last minute. You can do it online, I guess, with the social media, Facebook, our city website, and also a hard copy you can mail in. There was a proposal, and we're talking about it right now because I guess we lost our employee that works at the depot, so we're, right now, we're gonna have a proposal to maybe talk to the police about seeing if they could do it and lock it up after the train arrives and leaves.
Actually, the police are doing it.
Okay, well, hopefully they'll continue to do it. I don't know, but other than that, I think that's all we have right now, unless you guys have something to add.
I could add something to the police thing. Since the money's in the budget for, he's still, he still had money in his budget for the bicycle patrol, and we still had money in the budget for an employee. We'll, we'll just continue with him doing that until the end of our fiscal year, and then we'll decide if that is what we want to continue. But since the money was already there, you know, after approving, so we're having them do it.
Anything else on the DDA report?
That's all I have.
The next one is Parks and Recreation Report. Any updates on that later on? We'll talk about the Park and Recs 5-year adoption plan resolution, but for now, I'll get ended up on the Parks and Recs report.
That's pretty much what we did at our last meeting, was review it some more, just to make sure it looked like what we wanted it to, and then we passed the resolution and support of the city council adopting them.
Actually, the planning commission looked at it and passed the resolution to adopt it.
Anything else on that? What on next one is the Manager's Report?
This was basically about the flooding, and I wanted to let you know that the Hamilton Bridge, I'm still in contact with John Moxie, and he wants to come out. He did come out and look at it, and he is going to come out and look at it again after the water goes down a little more and see what kind, you know, what's going on under there, because there's a big cavern. He did manage to photograph it. I was afraid to get that close. So I don't really have any more on the bridge right now other than we, you know, there's a problem, the road's closed, and we haven't really been able to analyze it to the full extent yet.
So maybe next couple of days.
Yeah.
It's 50 is all week too.
Yeah.
Should bring the water down a little bit.
Anything else, Regina?
That's it.
Any question, Regina? Next one is the DPW liaison report.
Yeah, actually, everything, what I'm finding is that Jimmy and Regina and Randy have all been communicating really good. Jimmy's aware of where we're at with the budget, Regina's aware of what problems we We discussed a little bit about trying to get ready for spring, and we've got a couple of lawnmowers that are definitely in need of repair. Actually, they're eight years old, they need to be replaced, but we don't have it in the budget. But, you know, sending, you know, next year's budget, we ought to plan on replacing at least one of them because, well, actually, the one we looked at was a 2008, so it's 10 years old. Other than that, everything seems to be running pretty good. You know, Randy has even had contact with Regina on different things, and as far as their communications are, I think we're doing fine.
The only thing I'd like to add to that is I had an appointment this morning, so I'm gonna talk to Jimmy later. He concurred with the same thing that Harold was saying about the mowin' and everything. And yes, the mowers are 10 years and eight years old, and, you know, for Jake, if we could find a couple thousand dollars in the budget, maybe we could get one to do more, even if it's a smaller mower. They're not doing a lot of mowers, it's not like they mowed like we did 15, 20 years ago. They're mowing the public works and a couple of the wellhouses and that.
Are we?
So it's a possibility, if we're gonna put that much money into fixing them, we'd better off investing money in a brand-new one.
Are we gonna fire out mowing like we did last year? The sun's like that, dying out on the shore.
Yeah, I've done most of it, so there's four different companies, and we'll get bids March 5th at the next meeting. Take a look at them, see what they come up with.
So I'd like to see Regina, if she can look into it, if there's some money available. If we're really gonna put a thousand dollars into it, we put a couple thousand dollars into a mower, make a lot more sense.
Yeah, the mowers we got are just wearing front tires out like crazy. They probably only last a month or two, and they're totally bald. You know, and apparently, we tried to get one fixed, and it's still acting the same way.
I guess I'd agree with Steve, makes sense to just buy our own mowers.
Well, even if you bought, and more of an inexpensive, you don't have to buy a top line mower.
Right, right.
Something to look into.
Alls we do is look.
All right. Next one is opportunity of public comments. Regina, three minutes, anybody?
Was there any damage to the public works building with the flood?
No.
No damage to the parking lot or anything?
No. The water stopped about 18 inches short of covered it. You know, there's some damage to industrial drive, and it's mainly needs to be patched because of some asphalt, and then there was some erosion on Arlington by the sidewalk.
I've heard that.
It's all repairable.
Alex, want to comment?
I just have a question, is there anything in, in the plan to join things to Walnut Street, south of Arlington, along down to the school? It's so full of models.
Right, I've got, I've been in contact with Kyle Brenner, who worked on South Center, and also, I think he was here for Arlington, I'm not sure, but he knows several other road people, and they're going to take a look at the south side of it and see what we could do as far as who could give us the best bid on that, and at least do the south side this year. I, I think we could do that. We can't do the whole thing in one year, so then, next fiscal year, well, year after next fiscal year, we could look at the north side.
That's south side, that's much worse.
Anything else? All right, no more public comments, then we'll move on down. I guess, right now, I'd like to go into a public hearing for the 5-year Parks and Recreation Plan. So like a motion to close the current?
Make a motion to close the current meetings, we're going to a public hearing.
I support.
At 7:48?
I support. Okay, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to carry. At this time, can we get a motion to go into a public hearing for the 5-years Parks and Recreation Plan?
Make a motion that we go into a public hearing for 5-year Parks and Recreation Plan at 7, I guess we better say 49.
Let's do a roll call, or all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We're just carrying. So at this point, we're going to a public hearing for the 5-year Parks and Recreation Plan. Everybody's been given copies of the plan.
And there's a couple of black and white ones available up there for anyone who hasn't seen it, but might want to take a look.
One thing I was talking to Regina about too, I think we should add in here a potential project to be included for the milhod, potentially for the end of the lockdown. That's necessarily what's gonna happen, I think we just kind of leave that opportunity potentially there. Previously, there was one person, obviously, if we're gonna lend you a hundred thousand dollars for that project, and maybe kick off more funding and everything else behind it. Potentially, you know, we could, we had a van back in town, potentially, we could have lakefront property back in, we could do whitewater rafting from, from the cemetery come down, and it would be a more vital thing for the city of Bangor for Parks and Recreation, for our parks, potentially. Not necessarily it's ever gonna happen, but I would like at least in the, the Parks and Recreation Plan to actually do that in it as a potential project.
And the projects are on page 37 or 38, and I've got room, I can add, I can add that on page 38. And if it's in there, then you're open to that, and if it's not there, you can add that to the milhod, so it doesn't hurt to put it in.
Regina, a motion to put that in?
No, I don't.
You can just go ahead and add it.
Yeah, this is just a grant, so.
Is there anything else from the comment before we go?
Open meeting, you can talk, you and I.
Well, I'm just, I'm waiting for the time when I need to say something.
Well, yeah, let's, let's start with the council members. Is there any questions or comments before we move up to other people?
I like the, I like the plan, I'd like the, I like that it's focused on the parks, and I think that's where first focus needs to be. I think we need to get our parks up to some, and get them, because vital parks are gonna bring in a vital community. But one, one thing I, I think we need to do as a city, and I've said this for a while now, I think we need to develop a mission statement, because without that, it's gonna be hard for any of these other plans or anything to take motion, so we need to have a mission statement, and we don't have one, and we haven't had one for years, so I think that's something that we're going to need to do as a city.
You mean as a mission statement, as, as the city?
Right, because that's gonna guide these other, you know, like the Parks and Rec Plan, if our community, if we're looking to be a trail town and we're looking to have a vibrant community, then that, that should be stated in our mission statement, we should have something toward that, so when people come, they know what the focus of Bangor is, what our identity is, so. And I think that would help us out a lot as far as developing some of these plans, so. I'd like to see there, see that happen.
I wonder if that's something that would go in the master plan, which is really old too.
I think, I think that would be a good thing to put in the master plan.
We just gotta have one. If it is, it's probably off the date.
No doubt, I know.
I've had it 72 years ago. I, I would like to say that whoever was responsible for putting this together did a very, very nice job, the maps and all of the things that were included, I thought were really, really excellent. I like the city organizational.
There's an open meeting, you can talk. You and I.
Well, I'm just, I'm waiting for it to come to a time when I need a session.
Well, yeah, let's start with the council members. Is there any questions or comments before we move up to other people?
I like the, I like the plan. I'd like the, I like that it's focused on the parks and I think that's where first focus needs to be. I think we need to get our parks up to some and, uh, and get them, because vital parks are gonna bring in a vital community. But one, one thing I, I think we need to do as a city, and I've said this for a while now, I think we need to develop a mission statement because without that, it's gonna be hard for any of these other plans or anything to take motion. So we need to have a mission statement and we don't have one and we haven't had one for years. So, um, I think that's something that we're going to need to do as a city and, uh.
You mean as a mission statement, as, as the city?
Right. Because that's gonna guide these other, you know, like the Parks and Rec Plan. If our community, if we're looking to be a trail town and we're looking to, um, have a vibrant community, then that, our, that should be stated in our mission statement. We should have something toward that. So when people come, they know what the focus of Bangor is, what our identity is, so. Um, and I think that would help us out a lot as far as developing some of these plans, so. I'd like to see there, see that happen and.
I wonder if that's something that would go in the master plan, which is really old, too.
I think, I think that would be a good thing to put in the master plan.
We just gotta have one. If it is, it's probably off the date.
No doubt, right?
It's probably been seventy-two years ago. I, I would like to say that whoever was responsible for putting this together did a very, very nice job. The maps and, um, all of the things that were included, I thought were really, really excellent. Um, I like the city organizational chart that's in there. It's, you know, we've had one of those before, but I think this one's very, very nice and, um, just a lot of the data that was in there was, was good to read. So kudos to whoever put this together.
All right, any more questions by the council members? While we open this up, it's for the chair of the Parks and Recs.
Uh, yes. Over on, uh, Kwanis Park, page thirty-seven. About halfway down there on the left column, you'll see Tiskoff Trail and Shortland Dip Lane. Those two were voted by the board to be removed.
Not those. There was another park that, there was another park that had that.
And what park was that?
Uh, we had it, I see, I think also in, might have been Lions.
Place was the only place that we was gonna try.
No, we had, we had that actually in two of the parks and we left it in this one because it was on a year five. Because it was a year five.
It's a good place for it.
So it made, yeah. Because we weren't sure it was really important, so we said, just leave it on year five. It won't hurt anything if it's in there. And we did take it out of one of the other parks. We removed it entirely.
Okay.
Yeah, we did.
And then the next question was at Lions Park, uh, for the skate park, for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we had voted not to do that again.
I missed that, too.
No, we, we should've put Lions all through that a bit of that.
Well, why, why didn't you wanna take that out?
Well, because the first grant we got, we got, I think, it's something eighty-something thousand to put that first one in down there and then the city never took care of it. So now we're asking for another one. And this is ten years from the first one because our second attempt for a five-year plan got turned down.
Well, I know a lot of the kids like that and, and my suggestion would be, um, if you're going to do that, and I don't see a problem with it, I would go with a cement skate park. Because then you have no maintenance, it doesn't put, I mean, and it'll last forever, you know? I know they have one of those at Allegan and it works perfect. I see kids down there all throughout the summer, it gives them a place to go and you don't have to worry about a whole lot of vandalism or anything like that or destruction of it because it's cement. Uh, and it works, it works great, you know?
The lifespan of what we did have was like ten-year. I did, I had been talking to a skate park person and that wouldn't have lasted any longer than that anyway. It's because of the material it was made of. And so they did suggest different pipes. And there's two different kinds and one is the, what you were talking about. And they'll last a lot longer.
Well, it's not till year four, so, yeah.
It's a, it's a labor.
If you're familiar with Tony Hawk, the skater, he does rent for only concrete ones.
Yeah.
So we had discussed maybe trying to get that there, because we're asking for a lot of money.
Right.
And I'm afraid if we ask for too much, we might get turned down on things that we really need. So we kind of focus on things that we really do need in our parks.
Right. I mean, if you can do good, ask for Tony Hawk, I mean, it'll be certainly good. I think that's the way to go, have a state park, because you, it's gonna last, it's gonna be low maintenance and, you know, gives the kids a place to be, keeps them off the street.
You know, so ultimately, if y'all wanna vote to put it back in, it's, that's up to y'all.
I personally like to see it back there.
I have a question. I'm in rural park. Removing the water fountain, are we doing that just because nobody ever uses it and it?
I think that would be a good idea to take it out. Yeah, because people carry bottled water anyway.
Okay, okay.
To have a water fountain, I don't even know if it works. I think it's in a dam.
Is it used in rural park?
It's in rural park.
That was stolen about four years ago.
Is it gosh?
Oh. So we don't even have one? So we don't need to remove it?
So we already saved a thousand dollars?
All of a sudden, I went by and I thought, what the heck? The stainless steel sink is gone. Wow.
Oh, my gosh. The whole thing's gone? Is the whole thing gone?
Well, for some reason, I have to take it out of there in the winter months. It's at the shop.
Oh. Because that one was gone at that time when I was calling.
Every winter, I have to winterize it. Because the kids will steal it and the water gets in it and freezes.
This was in the middle of the summer, it was gone.
Yeah, we didn't put it up last year.
This was about four years ago when, um.
I got it in the shop.
Okay. I think it's sold.
Is that terrible to remove that whole fountain and all?
No, the.
You're talking about. No, I mean, remove the whole water fountain where it's not even existent no more.
Well, you'd have to hit it with a hammer and break it. Throw the cement in. The, the, the thing that goes up so far, I just take the guts out, put the other things in the cement and we'll add there.
Okay. So that's another decision y'all gonna have to make.
I can put it up, but the kids go down there and they push the button and sometimes the button stays on. It stays over overnight and everything, gets all muddy down there. Then people call in complaints, they go down and put a little oil on it, works for a couple more days.
Or they plug the drain up.
Well, I, I think the plan has a pretty good.
Remove, remove water fountain.
Well, I, under Veterans Park, demo or restore the slaughterhouse. I, I personally would be for demoing it.
We need to demo that thing, it's dangerous.
It's just, it's just been, it's just been a place for homeless people to.
Yeah, which is dangerous.
It is dangerous.
Go ahead, Regina.
On our original grant ten years ago, we were doing it for a five-k trail that circled the entire city and around the parks and all. And a couple of months ago, Regina and I found out that one of the first parks that was bought with that money, our property, was titled Bangor Park. Now, who knows where Bangor Park is? None of us did. But if you go directly north of the Wake property across forty-three, it runs on both sides of Maple Creek, all the way to Black River. That is part that was bought and purchased and it showed it was, what, forty-four and a half acres?
Forty-four acres, which.
So what I'd like to see is actually find out where our property lines are on each side and then we can move forward on establishing where we wanna walk on one side of the creek or the other there to continue our trail through the Wake property, the slaughterhouse, and then on into Veterans Memorial and then down back into Kwanis that way. So once we establish those property lines, then we can, if nothing else, start to do a walk trail down through there and then people, over a period of time, it'll establish itself and then we can start working on it.
Ben?
A while, a while back, uh, when I was on the city council, we tried to get the DEQ to allow us to put the boards back in the dam. And they sent us about a fifty-page note that detailed why they wouldn't ever let us do it. You're barking up their, that ain't never gonna happen.
Well, we, one of our people in town did speak to DEQ directly. The last four or five years. We put together a business plan, why, you know, how it can benefit the, the area in the city and their open suggestions for that.
I'm just telling you, they sent, they sent about fifty pages of why they'd never let us do it.
Yeah, but we also had a person come in directly higher level.
Oh, boy. It was about four million dollars at that time.
Yeah.
Which was in the nineties.
Yeah.
Maybe I knew people working there.
Uh, on land, there is a, a project called Dam Reclamation Project for the city of Bangor, for the Mill Park. And it is thick and you probably know what I'm talking about. And it tells all the guidelines that we have to go through in order to do that. But one of the questions I had from the very beginning was if that was, that dam was, it's just a two-by-six board dam that was raised and lowered by DPW according to the rainfall, my understanding. So, uh, the original fire department back then took that out. And I'm not being negative to anybody, but they took it out without authority, to my understanding, to keep it out. That was supposed to be just for the rescue and then go back in. It ain't like we done anything different.
They wouldn't let us put it back in.
You couldn't put it back in with rotten boards? You couldn't, it had specifications to go back in at that time.
They would not let us put it back in. Because we were talking about speaking down there in the middle of the lane and putting them back in.
Yeah, I don't have to do that. I don't do that no more.
And I was trying to get that.
We should've done that, because if we'd put them in, they wouldn't have let us take them out. But with this rainfall that we had, I was able to get enough pictures showing where the benches I installed in Mill Park. It was about an inch, almost got covered up on those, that tallest one. So from there, I photographed also, I went down to the dam and photographed how high that was. But then you'll get an idea of how far you'd have to drop that level in order to that. Understanding also, there's probably two to four percent of pressure that's gonna build up of probably two to four inches. So with that out of there and that creek just, the river just running normal, I, I don't think of why they wouldn't do that.
Well, like you said, it's a lot of specifications requirements, also dredging of the river. You have to have a fund for that, too. So, you know, like you said, other groups are interested in potential donations and getting it done.
Old cement fish ladder, as we put back in underneath it, it's all been washed out.
Yeah, because they told us with the trees and all, just go in and cut and do whatever you gotta do to get them out and clean it up. So we just moved the tree boards over and stacked them in over there and we're done.
Um, well, there's Parks and Recs, any other public comments, questions? All right, anybody else, anything else from the city council members? Okay, so no public comments on that. Um, so at this point, we're gonna have a motion to, like, have a motion to close the, um, public hearing.
Make a motion to close the public hearing at eight oh four?
Support.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion to carry? We don't have a motion for that?
Yeah.
I'd like a, a motion to go back into, uh, regular session.
I make a motion that we go back into regular session at eight oh five.
Support.
Let's do a roll call on that, or find anybody left.
Vader?
Yeah.
Hicks?
Yes.
Fry?
Yes.
Almond?
Yes.
Louder?
Yes.
Farmer? Yes.
Yes. Right now, unfinished business. We have DPW truck sealed bids.
I have one.
I have one.
I wonder if we'll get this. Seal this is.
It's killing me.
It's a bid for the two thousand Chevy from Dan Emson for six hundred dollars. And our minimum bid, we were asking was five hundred.
The white truck? You have one, snow block?
It's the white one.
The white one.
Looks like you gotta drive a truck.
Yeah.
So I guess basically, is your motion accepted?
Make a motion to accept it. I support.
Any more discussion? Roll call for approval to sell it?
Vader?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Fry?
Yes.
Almond?
Yes.
Louder?
Yes.
Farmer? Yes.
Yes, motion approved. Um, next one was the server replacement update.
Well, we did get it installed today. It arrived Friday and I think they were migrating information over into it. But today, um, one of the IT guys came out and he had it installed by about lunchtime. So it's up and running. I think, I wanna go back to the truck. We could probably change the date on that flyer and continue advertising the writing. Okay. Uh, the, uh, Van, that was Colin from Vanir and IT. He offered to take the old server because they do recycle those and they destroy all the information and slides so that no one else can use it or access it in any way. And I wanted to know what everybody's thoughts were on that. Um, it's about eight years old, he estimates.
It's got, it's got city information and everything on it. Yeah, we need.
Everything's off the old one to the new.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, um, I don't think it's something we should sell.
Kill it, destroy it.
Yep, there are anything, motion, anything on that?
I just wanted everybody's thoughts on it.
I think everybody's like, kill it and get rid of it.
All right, go down the list. Well, it's now the camera discussion.
Okay. Uh, I brought it up to put it back on the agenda. Uh, we had touched on it at the last council meeting briefly at the end of the night and, uh, found out that we didn't have access to shut it off or turn it on, which I, at the time, brought up was not good when we go into a closed session. Uh, we just got a fine example of it. When we started talking about the dam and replacing boards and not replacing boards in the dam. I think it's something that we should at least vote on as a council. Uh, it was never brought up for a council vote. I think we should at least vote on it. I'm not saying, yes, we should have it, no, we shouldn't have it, but I think it's something the entire council should vote on. Uh, there's pros and cons to having it, not having it. Uh, as I said before, Columbia Township's gotten into a lot of trouble by saying things and, and having somebody sitting in the audience that not happy with results and went to their attorney and found out that they could sue and they cost that township a lot of money. Uh, I can remind all of us, we're not a super professional setting here and things get said maybe half funny, half not, uh, half serious, half not. But, um, I talked to a council member this morning about it and, yeah, it might be good for training and it might be good for people that are shut in, but I think most of your seniors that are shut-ins and can and come to the meeting probably don't even have computers to begin with. There's, like I said, there's pros and cons, but I do at least think we ought to bring it up to a council vote. So I make a motion that we at least vote on the fact that we have the cameras on the audience and on the council at the same time. I support.
What was your motion to, or?
To ba- basically vote if we're gonna have the cameras to begin with. Because like I said, there's pros and cons of why we have them, why we shouldn't have them. Uh, it was never brought up to the council, why we should have them in the first place to take a vote. So I think we should at least take a vote and then discuss what we're gonna do with them.
So are, is your motion to vote to have cameras, not have cameras?
Not have cameras.
Not have cameras?
Yes.
And Fred, you second that?
Yes.
Okay. Also, since we do have our attorney here for legal advice, we'd like to at least get our legal advice done from our attorney also.
Sure. Well, uh, really, I agree with, with Danny, there are pros and cons, especially with the closed session. I think that can be huge issue, so, um, you know, some people will shut in, you know, sometimes, you know, it may be, uh, or if it's raining or we have a lot of snow. Not necessarily the shutting is already out, really. But, um, and ultimately, it's really up to you, whether you wanna go in and have that, you know, there are pros and cons and on these values, have that as well, too. So, uh, ultimately, again, it's, it's, it's up to you, pros and cons.
Sturlin, do you know municipalities that do have it?
With, uh, with the YouTube?
Yes.
I do. I do, yes. I, I know for a fact Lansing also has that as well and Social Television, too.
Do you have a city has it?
My big concern with the situation is that we need to have control here.
And you can have it, yes, you can.
We have it.
Yeah, that's, we need to.
Right, right. You need to have control.
If we go into closed session or for some reason, we need to throw them off for closed session, we just need to have that ability in our city hall. That's why I'm not, not saying that we should probably.
And also, one thing I'd like to, to know, too, I mean, there are no requirements that you have to have it. Ultimately, that's, you know, some if you want to provide to the, to residents here. So totally up to you, you don't have to have it. You know, sometimes it can, it can do, uh, more damage than.
I think we should.
Everything's recorded.
Yeah.
I thought we talked about it at the last meeting, that we were going to, uh, talk to the IT guys, that they were gonna see if they could look into our cameras.
We can control it ourselves.
We can now?
Yeah, well, we're not tonight. But I would have to get my laptop out here and I would have to be given a lesson on how to do it. And I kinda had some other projects I was working on, so I haven't done that right now. But if we keep the cameras, I will do it myself here with a laptop. We will have control. So it's up to you guys if you want it. Um, Columbia Township got in a lot of trouble for the Open Meetings Act violations. Not being transparent to the public.
About five hundred thousand dollars in lawsuits.
But that was a lack of transparency.
Right.
Right, so.
And they're not, it's not publishing when they're supposed to publish, when meetings were gonna be and everything else. It's like, you know, maybe you're comparing to Traverse City or Lansing or something like that. Uh, I don't feel like I'm up to the caliber of a councilman in one of those major cities. Uh, you know, I'm a businessman, you guys all have jobs that you do, but I just don't wanna see us get in trouble over something that is said or not said or not followed. but, uh, I just don't want to see us get in trouble over something that is said or not said or not followed. We try to be as careful as we can and we have Sturlin here for our advantage, but still and all, I, I just feel it's, it's something that we probably ought to stay back from at this point. So my motion is to vote.
Sturlin, if you were making a recommendation to us, what recommendation would you make?
One thing I'd like to add, too, we may also have a privacy issue, too. You know, people in the gallery, they may not want to be on a camera as well, too. So we also have to protect their identity and all this stuff, too. So, um, and, and quite frankly, you know, sometimes, you know, the best thing this profession is like, you know, I don't know. You know, ultimately, it's, uh, you know, I don't want to lead you guys, you know, in the false direction without, uh, setting the side of caution, you know, at this, at this stage.
So we'd be better off to stop them, set up the procedures, so everything's done right, and then if we want to react them, react them. Re-act them. So everything's done right and true.
I agree with you.
And, and also to, to give the residents an opportunity to, you know, if they want to agree, you know, to be on camera. Right now, what angles, you know, who's seeing what, you know, it's like, you know, again, people want to speak on the camera and, you know, have their voice and, you know, is it gonna use later on and, you know, for commercial purposes or, we don't know.
So would we have to put, would we have to put a disclosure on our door, whatever, let people know?
You know, it has to be. I mean, it's, I see that, but not too many people actually pay attention to it. It has to be at least before you enter, you know, this area.
Right, that's all. So we'd have to have a disclosure like that.
And also, we'd have to give the option to turn it off when they speak. I mean, it's still the public, they have their pack where they don't have to go on camera, they don't have to.
Yeah, it's a number, you know, it's gonna be used for, for people purposes, you know, it's like voice or image and things like that, too.
So then there's, there's two issues, what I'm hearing, is that we could make, take the camera away that faces the public
so they are not on that and just have it on us, or not have it on anybody.
That's an option, but what about the voice, too? So, you know, they can be like that. So there are a number of things you can, you know, it's gonna be a...
Actually, there's a lot of residents that really like this, that can't really make it down to the meetings. Uh, I agree that, you know, they need to be under our control and until they are, they need to be turned off.
And add org with, uh, Steve's, uh, idea, I think that's a great.
You can also like the twenty-four people in the room, too.
Right.
Right.
There's a lot of, like you said, there's a lot of people like watching the meetings.
Yeah, I know several of them that physically it's a real hardship to get here, but they're still very interested in what's going on. And of course, we want to be transparent, so I don't want to turn them off and everyone thinking that we're trying to sneak these things in here.
Well, I agree with Steve's idea. I think that's an excellent idea to just kind of step back from it right now, take a break and, uh, get a policy on it, figure out how we want to do it.
So then we could actually, would you be willing to amend your motion to state that we turn them off right now until we get procedures in place that, that we all agree with?
I would amend my motion to state that turn them off as of now, until we become more familiar with what we're doing and everybody's aware of what we're doing and we have the proper procedures in place to turn them back on. And I'd like to amend my second to reflect that.
Any more discussion? Let's go to a roll call.
Vader?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Fry?
Yes.
Almond?
Yes.
Louder?
Yes.
Farmer?
Yes.
Householder?
Yes.
Sturlin, do you have any type of policies for?
Motion approved. So, uh, work on that in the future. Um, going down the list is the, uh...
Okay, but I, I'm thinking that it's really important that the citizens understand that we're not doing this forever.
No, 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 no.
That we're just doing it till we develop policies and procedures.
And have control in city hall.
Right, because we don't want people out there, like Carol said, thinking that we're not transparent. We want to be as transparent as we possibly can to them, but we want to be smart about being transparent.
But also, it's not just about us, it's also about our, our public coming in. They don't want to be on camera, they don't want to be heard. And right now, all it takes is one person coming in for complaint immense nature and we're accountable for it.
I understand that, but that's why we want to have the policies and procedures in place. But I just want the general public to understand, this is not like we're doing away with it for forever. We're just doing away with it, it's how we develop those policies and procedures.
Yes. Alright, thank you, guys. Moving down the list, there's the, uh, new business. We got the Parks and Recs five-year plan adoption resolution, twenty eighteen dash zero four. Like my recommendation is, like you said, we just had one for a potential project, not necessarily to materialize or anything else, but I'd like to at least put it in there, uh, if there's other companies that looks like to potentially pursue that project for the Millstone.
So are we hoping to opt on this right now until we get?
No, we cannot hold off on this. This has to be to the VNR by March first.
Okay.
So can I amend that to it?
I can add it tomorrow and take, because I gotta take the draft off it anyway. So, yeah, I'll just add that.
Okay, so if we're, I just want to make sure that I've got this clear before you make your motion, that you're going to amend this, we're gonna vote on it the way it is.
I'll just add that.
And you'll amend that project on, and then, okay, I just want to make, make that clear.
So I make a motion to accept a resolution twenty, number twenty eighteen dash zero four, the resolution of the option of the twenty eighteen to twenty, I'll assume that's twenty-three, Bangor Parks and Recreation Advisory Board Community Parks Recreation Open Space and Greenway Plan.
House support.
Okay, any more discussion?
Whereas the city, whereas the Bangor City Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee is undertaking a planning process to determine the recreation and natural resource conservation needs and desires of its residents during the five-year period covering the years two thousand eighteen through two thousand twenty-three. And whereas the Parks and Recreation Advisory, Advisory Committee began a process of developing a community recreation and natural resource conservation plan in accordance with the most recent guidelines developed by the Department of Natural Resources and made available to local communities. And whereas residents of the city of Bangor were provided with a well-advertised opportunity during the development of the draft plan to express opinions, ask questions, and discuss all aspects of the Recreation and Natural Resource Conservation Plan. And whereas the public was given a well-advertised opportunity and reasonable accommodations to review the draft plan for a period of at least thirty days. And whereas a public hearing was held on February twenty-sixth, two thousand eighteen, at City Hall, two fifty-seven West Monroe Street, to provide an opportunity for all residents of the planning area to express opinions, ask questions, and discuss all aspects of the Bangor Parks and Recreation Community Parks Recreation Open Space and Greenway Plan. And whereas the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board has developed the plan as a guideline for improving recreation and enhancing natural resource conservation for the city of Bangor. And whereas the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board and the Planning Commission have passed resolutions in support of the prior year plan, now therefore be resolved that the Bangor City Council hereby adopts and approves the city, the Community Parks Recreation Open Space and Greenway Plan.
Motion was made by Fred Hicks and seconded by Lynn Palmer.
Actually, yeah, on the title there, of course, it's two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty-three. You got it, correct.
It's a resolution twenty, yeah.
I said that one three days. I was hoping some hike on there.
That's just the title.
We also need to fix adoption on there, too, that's spelled wrong.
Oh, too high.
Okay, uh, let's do a roll call on that.
Vader?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Fry?
Yes.
Almond?
Yes.
Louder?
Yes.
Farmer?
Yes.
Householder?
Yes. Motion approved. Been a long time. Now the next one? Is the second quarter budget amendments?
Anyone else need a copy of the system report or, you know? Always have, oh, I got it.
I got it.
Have we asked the questions yet? Can I ask a question? No, it's just a quick question, though. Under that, uh, the general fund, the community stabilization, um, why are we so far over budget on that? And what exactly is all that, the community stabilization?
It's fifteen thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars.
Oh, that, actually, um, we're over on that. Um, that's your revenue and last year, we got a little over six thousand dollars and this year, they sent us almost twenty-four thousand and that is to replace the lost personal property revenue.
Oh, so that's a...
That's a good thing.
Yeah, I don't know how they're doing their figures, but they don't want to give us that much.
We don't want to complain. Throw a little bit more there.
So it kind of looks like some of these are kind of backwards.
Yes.
Since this is positive, these should be negative parentheses around it, right?
Well, the revenue is kind of funny, we collected that much more revenue than I projected.
Yeah.
Is basically it.
So basically, in that over budget, it's all, it's all positive.
Those are all positives.
Because if it was negative, we'd have parentheses around it.
Yeah, those are all over, over what I projected.
Well, we were looking at fifteen hundred, here's only got thirteen ninety-two, so that'd be under, right?
Oh, that one would be.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, that one is it.
Which one is over?
That one.
Yeah, the only is in.
So that should be in parentheses, so, yeah, that's, that's what I was confused after I got it.
That's for ninety-two dollars. That one was under. But we're not done, so I don't know if, you know...
Yeah, so we're still about nineteen grand, love what you did.
Yeah, there was a question mark on the airport authority, right?
Yeah, I, I'm gonna contact them, I don't know how they figure the collection of the millage they, they get. Because last year, what page is that on?
Looking for it.
Yeah, um, I budgeted what they charged us last year and this year was a couple grand more, so I don't know.
Looks like it's on page four. No, page five.
Five.
Account number one oh one, four four one.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah. I don't know how they calculate that. Well, it was almost eighteen hundred dollars more this year than last year.
Right.
And all we got was a ticket.
We talked to Pam, asked Pam, but he's a little bit ahead of us.
I have no idea what to do with it.
Yeah, because the last time when I talked to Pam, there wasn't...
That's what she said, but we have checked all the revenue, it's all been put in and everything that was written is actual genuine expenses and, and so we ended up overspending on that one. So I don't know. I don't know how to account for, because that's what she told us, we got within a couple hundred dollars.
Yeah, that's what I was told.
More like a couple grand, so... There isn't much we can do about it.
But when they get their donations, they can give to the city, they will.
Yeah, there we go, our five oh one C three for...
Well, I'm not the chair anymore.
I know.
I did resign.
Where was it at when you were still?
You're still in charge.
Yeah, um, last time I knew, we were gonna have a meeting, um, things, people couldn't make it to the meeting, so we didn't finish it out. So there was gonna be a meeting to get it all taken care of and it didn't happen because people couldn't make it, so...
And my office still stand out, again.
Okay. And I'll, and I'll pour that to them. But, yeah, I'm, I'm, you know, those, you know, we have a good committee with that festival. When I left, I was told it was a couple hundred, I was gonna throw my own money, it was a couple hundred.
Well, that's the number I get.
But this is a shocker to me.
I see three thousand here.
Yeah. You know, Pam told me when I talked to Treasure, oh, it's only, you know, we're only a couple hundred under. I'm like, oh, okay, well, then, I'm pretty sure when they, when they get their donations, they'll definitely cover it. How much did you give us last year for the?
We did five hundred dollars worth of bills.
Okay. Know what I mean, as far as donations for that festival?
That's what we did.
Okay, five hundred, okay.
Looks like we donated more than that.
Well, yeah, well, that's gonna be bad.
I was gonna have to come up with a solution, you know, so we can keep that under better control.
Yeah, again, I, I'll talk to them and I'm more than positive that they'll talk to Regina and then when they get donations, they'll, they'll cover it.
They've got their own account now, too.
Yeah.
Because normally, we started out with a, uh, a plus balance before the donation. This year, we're gonna start out with a negative three thousand balance, that, that's gonna make it...
We have to do a lot of donations. Again, when I left, I thought it was three hundred dollars, make it clear.
It's gonna make it tough.
I went over with Pam and I was told there was like a three hundred difference, three hundred dollar difference. I was like, okay, that can easily be covered. To see this is a shocker to me. So maybe I, we can get together with Regina and look this over to that side.
This was at the half of the year, pretty much everything could be shuffled around. I didn't have to add any new revenue in anywhere, it's just all moved to different lines. Some of the lines didn't have much spent, uh, percentage-wise, and then some of them were closer to, um, being exhausted. So, but it's, for the half of the year, it's just pretty much moved around in different places and overall, for the half of the year, we were probably at forty-nine percent. Because some of the, some of the lines were hardly touched, you know, and other lines were. And I, I couldn't really show it on the general ledger printout because the parks money isn't going into the revenue lines and neither is the road millage money. So we've got to get with BSNA and see how to get those funds in there so that we get an accurate... Plus with the SAW grant coming and going out of the lawn line, that kind of bumps that one to where it looks like it's way overspent, but that's just money coming in and out, you know, huge amounts. So it really wasn't a good representation of, um, of the condition of the, of the budget.
Yeah, it appears that for a half year, we're fifty percent roughly. So we're trying to out-budget. The only department that didn't have as much variation or went out of budget at all was the police department. They're right out of budget.
Yeah, that department's good. The major streets and the sewer, we've got a pretty big hit with the, the dip repair, so we'll just kind of hang on and see where we end with that. I don't want to go into any fund balances in the sewer. I really don't want to do it with the roads either, because we have road projects, other road projects I want to do.
And then you're calling up the, the airport, right?
I'm gonna find out how they calculate that.
Well, well, can they?
So we know what's going on.
Has the fire department brought up with our property and our, how it's calculated? It's actually reducing for the city or?
Well, I'm thinking if they do it on tax, well, I don't know how they came up with that, so...
Yes.
I guess, uh, I'll make a motion to accept the amended budget, that's presented.
House support.
Any more discussion on it? I want to do a roll call on it, please.
Vader?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Fry?
Yes.
Almond?
Yes.
Louder?
Yes.
Farmer?
Yes.
Householder?
Yes. Motion approved. The next one is, uh, Resolution to waive PTA fine, twenty eighteen dash zero five.
And that's the property transfer affidavit that gets filled out when property is sold. And sometimes in the transaction, it'll get overlooked and the city won't get it. It happens in a lot of municipalities, there's a forty-five day limit and you're supposed to get it. If you don't, you're supposed to find the person. And nobody does that. And, um, I was at the last, the last, um, class I attended on assessing principles. That was discussed with the fourteen-point review. This, the State Tax Commission is coming down kind of hard on the different units and really examining everything they do and taking points away for every little thing. The property tracks, property transfer affidavit, if we just waive that fee, then if they come and look at our records and they find we haven't collected it, it doesn't take any points away. And the, we usually get the transfer affidavit, sooner or later, someone realizes it wasn't done. And we do get it, sometimes it's not within the forty-five days and, and...
So we're not really making...
So basically, so basically, the resolution is just protecting us in case somebody forgets to do that.
Is to protect us and the accessory as well, so... It was suggested that all the, all the units do this. And, um, Diana said, we have done this in the past when Larry was here, but we don't know where that resolution is right now. So we thought, just may as well do a new one, we'll have it in, in the book, we'll know where it is and...
Somebody want your motion?
I make a motion that we adopt Resolution twenty eighteen oh five, Resolution waiving penalty fees and interest for failure to file a property transfer affidavit. a property transfer affidavit.
Wait a second.
I'm sorry.
Lynn, would you like to read it?
Section two eleven twenty-seven A of the general property tax requires a buyer, guarantor, or other transferee of property file a property transfer affidavit as prescribed by the state tax commission with the appropriate assessing officer in the local unit of government in which the property is located and whereas section two hundred eleven point twenty-seven B of the general property tax act imposes penalties for the failure to file a property transfer affidavit after forty-five days have elapsed and whereas section twenty-one dash point twenty-seven B of the general property tax act provides that the local governing body may waive by resolution the penalties levied for the failure to file a property tax transfer affidavit and whereas the city of Bangor hereby waives the penalties for the failure to file a property transfer affidavit within the forty-five days of transfer. Now, therefore it be hereby resolved that the city council of the city of Bangor hereby waives penalties under section twenty-one point twenty-seven B of the general property tax act. It is further resolved that the city clerk in the city of Bangor is hereby directed to send a certified copy of this resolution to the city assessor. It is further resolved that all resolutions or parts of resolutions in conflict here within are hereby repealed.
Thanks. Any more discussion? Let's do a roll call, please.
Vader?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Alamon?
Yes.
Lowder?
Yes.
Farmer? Yes, householder.
Yes.
Um, the next one is a passport grant proposal by Johnson and Anderson. Regina, you wanna talk about?
Yeah. I ran into Catherine Mackey at the grant workshop for the DNA that I attended and she asked if we were going to, submit a grant this year and I said, I hadn't really thought about it. I just wanted to get the plan done because these have to be uh, submitted by April. The plan has to be submitted by March. But, um, during the class, they were telling us that the grants are submitted in April. Then you get told in November whether or not you got the grant and then they release the money the next spring. So if we don't go for a grant this spring and we wait till next spring, it's gonna be another year. So, um, we talked about it and decided that more a park would be a, a really good part to try to get a grant on if we were to upgrade the concession stand and the doors are falling off it and the six the field, um, get new bleachers, put, um, energy efficient lighting in part and a net to keep the balls in. And I don't know what may be listed in here. Anyways, cameras. Oh, there you go. Um, we were looking at about seventy-three thousand dollars of which, um, twenty-five percent is a match. Um, if you do twenty-six percent, you get points. So you probably wanna bump it up to twenty-six.
I don't see the bathrooms in there.
Um, we, well, if we did everything, we're looking at a lot more money than we can't match it. So if we get new doors on the building, that'll help a lot because the doors are falling off the building.
But isn't that bathroom kinda important? Cause I'm.
The bathrooms are, as far as.
Wasn't there, wasn't there an issue before where there was?
Then going to the session stand.
Right.
Going to the session stand.
But it didn't have security cameras, which is solved there.
And wasn't there an issue with the, the drainage or the sewer or something in the bathrooms? Or what, we had a problem with that on touch?
Well, we had a couple of that. I don't remember.
But we talked about that.
I just figured if.
We had problems with them spring. It, you know, the, the cyber team wants us to open them up too quick and let everything freeze. So that was the only problem. There was no insulation in any of it.
Okay.
Hot water tank.
Again, the hot water tanks broken in it now.
Okay.
Just the last two times I remember that we heard somebody write a grant for us, uh, we didn't get it. I don't know whether we're wasting our money.
I know we did one for meters.
That was, uh, they're a couple years apart.
I know we did though. Well, and the problem with the meter one is we didn't have, um, there was something that we didn't have.
One stand up or something.
We had, yeah, and there was a reason why. We needed, um, something we didn't, oh, I think it was a cat. And then we didn't have one. Yeah.
We're in possession.
Right, yeah.
So, so basically for this grant potentially to be written, it will not exceed five thousand five hundred dollars, basically.
So I'm, I'm kinda with Harold on this too because I know when we did that other grant with, uh, with the gentleman that came and we didn't get anything. Right, so.
That was water meters, right? That was.
No, this was, uh.
No.
When we got turned down, I was, I guess Bloomingdale ended up.
Bloomingdale got it.
Yeah.
Because they had, had things in place prior to that we hadn't.
Yeah, they had a higher grade, higher points than what we had.
Right, I understand.
They accumulated more points to be in the running than we.
But my point is that wasn't disclosed to us by that gentleman when he was doing that. Um, that's why I didn't like it at the time. And these guys are saying they're gonna do this, but are they disclosing to us? Like, do we have to have anything in place? Cause I'd hate to have something like that happen again where they come and say, oh yeah, we'll write this for fifty-five hundred. Well, by the way, you didn't get it because you didn't have this and this in place after the fact, you know, after they collected money. So, I think you all can see my concern.
Right. Well, what we have to have in place is the, we have to have the parks and rec plan submitted to the D N R. And it has to be approved. But I don't see why this one wouldn't be.
I think, okay, so you're thinking.
I've got, yeah, everything on their checklist is taken care of with this. So, um, it's up to you guys.
Cause I mean, I'd love to see that.
Yeah, no, I, I don't know where we're gonna get the money unless we start getting grants, but I, I don't know. I just don't wanna.
So we're gonna.
Percentage is really low of getting one and I'm not wanting to take a waste of money.
Well, I guess they're doing that too. Whatever chances of getting this grant.
Not bad. This is a passport grant. Those are a little easier to get. Those are usually park focused and, um, as far as the, the points, you know, the points are on things like how much of a match. If you do twenty-five percent, that's their minimum, but you don't get points for that. Um, other than that is need.
We need it.
Well, the last one that we did was on the point system as well, but it was also you got what, twenty-five points if you didn't manage your city well and you were gonna be taken over by the state. That was, that was that last one, you know, so. This appears not to be that type of grant. That was not a good thing, so.
So does anybody wanna make a motion to accept this, uh, not to exceed fifty-five hundred dollars to apply for this grant? For Johnson and Anderson to write a proposal for a, a grant for, uh, this passport.
I'll make a motion to accept Johnson and Anderson's proposal for professional consulting engineering services um, for the two thousand eighteen M D N R recreation passport man application submitted for Don Moore.
We gotta put not to exceed.
Not to exceed fifty-five hundred, so.
Thank you.
There is, wait a second. Okay. Any more discussion on it?
You know, have you talked to these people directly?
Yeah, I, I know Catherine pretty well. I mean, we worked on a couple of her plans, but she was at the workshop and I talked to her about this. We don't have to do it. It's just that if we don't try to get grants, we're never gonna, we're, we're gonna bring in nine grand a year with our millage. And we're not gonna be able to do much with that. So I just figured this is fifty up to. The more I work with her on this, the less it'll cost. So I'll work with her as much as I can.
Let's see, we're gonna spend most of it applying for a grant that I'm not sure we're gonna get. Nobody's sure really. I would, yeah, like if there's seventy-five percent chance, I think it's worth the risk.
If we can come up and say we'll give a fifteen percent match or something, that increases our chances, right?
The more, yeah, if you do over, like if you do a twenty-six percent, you get points. I mean, grants are that way. You, there's no guarantee. You don't know.
There's no guarantee. But I mean, I'd like to do something feasible. Like that other guy was fast talking. He was a salesman and I think that's what he was doing in the first place. But, you know, if you think this is a good grant and the chance of us getting it, I, I mean, I'm all for it because this is something that needs to be done. Those bleachers down there are unsafe. They're gonna have to be done at some point.
The fence, the lighting, the security system. We, we need a lot of work on every, every thing. We use that part.
So Regina, am I hearing you say the closer that you work with this lady, the better our chances are of getting this grant? Is that what I'm hearing?
The less it'll cost us.
Okay.
Yeah, cause I, I told her I would help her with it.
Okay.
And so the more I can help her with it, the less. And that's why they, they couldn't really come up with an exact and they said not to cost more than.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay.
So it actually could be less than.
That's what they do and they, they get the grants. They, they do a good job of getting them. And I thought if I could work with someone that's done them before, I've never done one of these. I mean, I could send one in and it might not go anywhere.
Doing a grant is a lot of work. I did one.
There's no.
I, I, I won't send anything to the company that I did it for because I'm like, no, it's a lot of work.
Okay. There's been a motion seconded. Um, let's have a roll call, please.
Vader?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Frye?
Yes.
Alamon?
Yes.
Lowder?
Yes.
Farmer? Yes, householder.
Yes. Motion approved. Uh, again, have two in the public comments. Name, name, name. Any minute? Anybody? One wants, one place.
I have a question from Robertson. Uh, could you tell me the date for the hearing on the golf cart order?
March fifth.
March fifth. Okay, thank you. Was that advertised? Did I miss it?
Well, it, it was advertised, but we were trying to use a real newspaper.
Oh, God.
So who reads those, right?
Okay, alright.
It's like go in the back and they're in the back where those little, the little print is and all the little columns.
Really?
That's where they.
Which paper did you put it in?
That one letting Harold play him.
So go with, you know, around here, I don't know, but.
But if we put it in the reminder, it doesn't count.
Really?
Yeah.
That's kinda, okay.
There's a shopping guide, yeah. I know. I don't agree.
Okay.
Any other public comments? No, we're just keep on moving. Um, everybody's got a copy of the board's mission appointments correspondence for the prank here, January times. Any questions, comments on that? Next one is regional airport. Any questions, comments about the memorandum from the last meeting? Um, at this point, let's go to council member comments. Danny?
Okay. Um, I had a little discussion with Stephanie this afternoon. I just happened to be watching the windows of the shop and I noticed that each one of you girls from city hall will take a trip over to the deposit box. And even though Stephanie was walking over, she was thinking about it at the same time I was. There wasn't a soul in sight, but you guys are taking a deposit over there. I think I'd rather see you guys drive your car over there because I know Mrs. Farmer does that and I feel a lot safer for you. I don't shoot very good from the barber shop. So I just feel it would be a, a, a better move for us because you never know when somebody's gonna get crazy. Fifty dollars is a lot of money to some people in this town. I don't want to see anybody get hurt over that. Um, secondly, you guys are doing a great job, as is our DPW department. And I'm very proud to say that I live in the city of Bangor. Uh, I think the council's doing really good. Uh, talking about different things, discussing things, getting it out on the table. Uh, I would like to see and talking to my fellow council member Fred here, um, maybe some, how would I say it, improvements towards the Apple Festival. Uh, I think we can improve upon that greatly and just gonna a few more conversations. It's, some things could be going real well for us. Um, the grants, I think it's, it's like Regina said, and you and I have talked about that grant with this lady you're talking about. Now, I think the last one that we did when we were in competition with Bloomingdale, they had so many things in place before we got there. And it's a learning experience for all of us. We learn as we go and, you know, like Fred said, the guy was a pretty good salesman and thanks for your money. Oh, I'm sorry, you didn't get it. But this one, I, I, you know, talking to Regina, I feel that, you know, we gotta start doing something like you guys said with more a park. It's our moneymaker as far as parks go. And we just gotta keep trying and keep pledging away. And I, I'm very confident in businesses that are coming to town. I think they're gonna contribute to a lot of things that we need done. Uh, they wanna be good neighbors in the community and I really feel like some of them are really gonna be and really gonna surprise us. So, uh, there is an answer to our prayers sometimes. So that's all I got.
Thank you, Danny. Frye?
Um, just gonna give a quick, uh, report on the South Haven Bronson, um, um, hospital. Um, they sent me an email with some of the updates now. Um, so during the first year, they expanded access to the Bronson primary care specialty providers and excessively raised the bar on quality and safety, achieving a three-year reaccreditation, uh, from the joint commission. Um, they also completed the facility and parking improvements, electrical and refrigeration upgrades, and installed new sterilized equipment in surgical, in the surgical suites. They continued to provide the wellness scholarships, uh, to those who are, um, not, uh, not fortunate enough to be able to afford it, but they do get scholarships so they can exercise at the wellness center and go and, uh, and help them lose weight, uh, and live a healthier lifestyle. Um, let's see if it goes. Some of the highlights of what's happened. Um, connected care is better care. So, um, there's one single electronic record now, so they are epic. Um, and you do have Bronson My Chart, so it's a secure online, um, um, portal for anyone who wants to, uh, you know, track their own health. Uh, improved access to primary care and specialty care services, um, uh, is one thing that was added also. They added new providers in family medicine and the women's health, increased the wound care services and offer, um, uh, increased orthopedic services also. Um, since becoming part of the Bronson healthcare system, um, ex, uh, significant effort has gone into delivering exceptional care experiences. Timing, this is a key factor in quality and service. That's why we are now reliably utilizing Bronson's own ambulance service for patient transfers to Van Buren, um, Leamons, Van Buren Emergency Medical Services. Um, let's see what else we got. Um, uh, they did, um, okay, I reread that one. Okay. Sounds like that's about it. Oh, they do have a, a be active, uh, program, uh, for no-cost nutrition education to low, uh, low-income community members. Um, the attendees will learn how to make small changes toward a healthier diet, prepare quick and healthy family meals, shop healthy on a budget and read food labels, better manage weight and be more active in ways, um, they enjoy. So that is a good thing for anybody you know that might qualify for that. They can also contact the hospital for that. And that is it this time.
Okay.
That's it. That's all I have.
Thank you, Fred. Harold?
Actually, I'd like some feedback on how you feel about two percent, uh, increase for the park. I represent the city. I want to be able to tell them what your thoughts are. You see me and tell me some other time, otherwise you can say something now. I don't feel.
Also, what another meeting?
Department needs, you know, we're going to vote next Monday to present a budget for the twenty-eighth of March. And, you know, if there's gonna be a problem, uh, we need to know about it.
Shouldn't we have a look at that budget before we, uh?
When we do that in our next meeting?
Yeah.
Our meeting here.
It's kinda premature myself.
Next, the end of fifth, Monday.
Make comments with us.
Derek, can you make sure we get copies at city hall? Regina, get it out to all the council members?
After our, I can't make copies of it until the board approves of that. There are more meeting on the, uh.
Okay.
So the fire board has to approve it to be sent to the entities at number twelve. So we'll be there in our next meeting.
That's all I have.
And Harold? Steve?
Yeah, I just wanna make a couple comments about our flooding. Jim, thanks, uh, for your approval out there and putting the relief aid fees out. You helped a lot down there. Appreciate all the work you guys done. Regina, make a phone call to you and get into the school. You already got old Tommy to, to trust, uh, having the officers down there to stop the kids from playing around in the water. Derek, your, your people were blessing to have them help get everything done down there. I needed. And our chief Simpson, um, same thing, put his people down there and they went and talked to all the people on industrial park road and got most of them to detour around everything, stop coming through the flooding. So I do appreciate all that help. Efforts on that just shows that incident command and unified command works very well. If we all work together, it does work. Also, I don't know if you guys received a flyer or maybe you've told Regina, uh, Mark Stickles, who started out as a Bangor police officer here, retired, Friday before last, I think it was. I don't have the exact date, but it was, you know, last Friday or the Friday before. With quite a few service, service years with the Van Buren County Sheriff's Department and he started out as a Bangor officer. Um, I don't know if city, if city hall went a city representation and I definitely don't know if Bangor Police went, but, uh, But probably was something they should have done. I do know the fire department set some people.
We didn't know anything about it.
We didn't get anything here at all.
Didn't get any? Anyhow, he retired and he wasn't a long city employee here for quite a few years. We just went through some training on harassment and stuff like that. Do we have any kind of social media policy? You know, with all the, with all the committees that we have, it'd probably be a good idea to have something on that because anybody that's on a committee could make some comments on social media. We can all be looking bad.
We had talked about making a policy on that.
We talked about it. Did we have?
We do.
We'll look and see if anyone in the...
We'll have to check it in.
Yeah, because I thought we did that a while back ago.
Sure we did.
If we do, and we have one, that's great.
Yeah.
But like I say, we have, we have a lot of different committees out there, a lot of different people doing things in the city for us. And then, what's the status on the 515 and a half Hamilton Streethouse? I took a nice little ride around town, showed Tommy quite a few things. And then I just happened to see, you remember the one that burnt? It's just a couple of houses down from the new Jerry's Garage, so to speak.
Yep.
And it's been sitting there all boarded up for eight years.
Seems like we don't...
That's the old burnout.
Yes.
Two-story apartment house?
It was owned by a bank, I thought.
I think, I think the, I think the bank owned it and, and they were not very cooperative at the time because that was why it sat there.
We borrowed money on it. I know it's the city. And we boarded it, re-boarded it. I don't know, Regina, you've been boarding it?
I've laid it.
So I mean, it's still violating ordinance?
There's no owners. There's no, there's no, there's no bank anymore. There is no banking.
But trying to contact, we don't want to buy anybody.
Well, I think, I think it might be on the spring tax. Because whoever the bank, I contacted, there were several banks.
Right, right.
And none of them have anything to do with it anymore. But nobody's paying the taxes on it now. So there's no owner, there's no bank. So I think the county probably will.
It's just a big liability.
There were several banks, the 515.
Just behind Jerry's.
It's a big white, two-story.
And it's got an angle front door. Yeah, okay. That's been, yeah, that's been...
Been two apartments and...
I know, but for years, people have tried to contact who owns it, like Regina said. Can't find out who owns it. And, and all the banks said they didn't own it. Now there's no owner and now nobody's paying taxes. So it will probably go up on the county auction.
Anything else, Steve?
Nope. We'll add more.
Friday night, I went to the opening of Cognito. It was very lovely. They are going to be having a grand opening sometime in March. So I hope that we will all get out and support them. Their beer's quite good. Also, a week ago Saturday, we went to a gathering at Mead Hall. Again, very fun, lots of people there, four different people that made Mead. So again, supporting a local business. Want to say thank you to Jimmy. I was just talking to him about this. It appears that our hot patch that we did last year is holding up very well. And it appears that none of it has popped out of holes and made new potholes. So kudos to you guys. And I just want us to remember that this was the worst flooding there's been that we had in 40 years. So I think we need to be thankful that there wasn't more damage to Bangor than there was. And also tomorrow night at Branch Library, they're going to be having DNA and genealogy at 6 o'clock. So a nice program to support our library.
Thank you, Lynn.
That's it.
Gina?
Yeah, well, some of the good things I heard today, I'm excited to, to work with Dan with SAT practice. Because I think our school needs a little bump in, in test scores. So I'll be one thing that I wouldn't mind bringing some of my students here. Having them get a lot of that practice. I think that'd be very good. Because the times that I'd had SAT training for students, it showed in their overall scores. It's good to see that we got upgrades coming to our school. And that's it.
Once you guys know, there are surveys out there right now going on too about the, about the DDA.
I listen when that one's done.
And Parks Rec's just closed. And one big thing is, this has been a big shadow for the Parks Rec's plan for, for years. And now we finally have a plan, a resolution that passed for an updated plan to be submitted to the state. Soon, hopefully, we'll have the DDA plan submitted. And the planning mission's working on one. We have to still finish that with our master plan. So hopefully, as we go into this year, 2018, maybe we can finish our master plan for the city. And that will also qualify us. And when we talk about the points and requirements for the city for grant eligibility, higher up scale, that we have updated plans for all these requirements. Like you said, it's, it's a gamble. We get some of these grants, but if we do nothing, our park's going to sit there and decay more. I hope Regina and everybody does a great job on that. Maybe we can, you know, give some matching funds and get something done behind Hardings and have a nice park like it used to be in years past. Get lights up there, nice park up there, get some more ballgames going on and more events going on.
And kudos to the people that are doing the plans because they've been talked about forever by the city and they were never done. And so kudos to the people now who are making all this happen for us to be.
So we're talking 10, 15 years, at least, some days.
Awesome, too.
Yep.
They really look nice there.
Yep, so thanks a lot to the city council members. Keep up your hard work. The ladies and everybody at City Hall, DPW, let's just keep going, doing what we're doing and take little bites at a time and keep improving. We have a lot of new businesses coming into town. And hopefully next year, we'll start seeing those little tax rolls too, allows us to do more. Hopefully, we'll see more growth coming in, these new businesses also. You know, our downtown's starting to fill back up. Maybe we'll have some opportunities coming in. Our, you know, our industrial park's full. And hopefully, they'll start breaking ground and that in the spring and just moving in the right direction.
I have a young man that's going to be joining me in the next week as another barberist.
Excellent, excellent. You'll be able to break through.
Let me go.
Congratulations, Danny. Based on that, like a motion to adjourn to meeting?
So...
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Andrew, thank you.